I'd like to call this meeting at the Long Branch City Council Workshop to order. Roll call.
Mrs. Billings?
Here.
Mr. Pallone?
Here.
Mr. Sirianni?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Bastelli?
Here.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. This evening we have a very heavy agenda. I'm going to ask everyone to kindly keep the presentations as short as possible. And I'm going to begin with a presentation by the Bluffs. And we have Stephen Gowan coming up to present. And Mrs. Fusco as well.
Good evening, thanks everybody. I know that we have a very busy agenda tonight, so I'm going to try to cover a lot of information relatively quickly. I do have a handout that I'm going to pass out at the end, so you'll have all our main points summarized, you know, if you want to go into executive session and talk about this. Obviously, we've been here before a few times. We've submitted an application for a long-term tax exemption for the Bluffs project. That original application was denied by resolution to the city council. We've since come back with a revised application, and so that is what we are here in support of tonight. Basically, what our presentation comes down to is two things. One is fairness. This project needs a pilot to be competitive. It needs a project to be competitive not only with the surrounding towns, Bradley Beach, Seabright, Monmouth Beach, all of which have lower tax rates than Long Branch and for which this project will compete for ultimate unit purchasers. Most importantly, though, it needs a pilot to be competitive with the project right next door. The FEM real estate project has received a pilot, a 10-year long-term tax exemption. That project, the pilot that it received is the same project that our client is looking for, is the same pilot that our client is looking for from the city council now. And realistically, to ask this project to move forward without the same benefit of the long-term exemption that the neighboring project received would be really unfair. You know, I wish there was a better term for it, but it comes down to fairness. And for this project to succeed, for this project to attract the types of buyers that it needs to attract to be successful, it needs to be placed on at least even footing with the FEM real estate project. So naturally why we're here tonight, honestly, if the council has any questions at all, I know we're covering a lot of technical information with the long-term exemption, if there's any questions that we can answer, we'd be happy to do so, even in the limited time we have. But first, I want to try to dispel a few misconceptions that we think that the city council has to deal with, and not necessarily on the city council, but maybe from some of the residents and some of the concerns that you're hearing from residents. One, I've talked about, the project doesn't need a pilot. This is, this is an area that should be easy to redevelop because it's on the waterfront, and this is a great piece of land, and this should be an easy project. The fact of the matter is, I just talked about, is that the project does need a pilot to be competitive, not only with the surrounding towns, but with the project right next door. It needs to be at least on even footing with the project next door. The second misconception is that the ultimate beneficiary of a pilot is only going to be the developer or the residents of the project. And I understand that from the city council's perspective, you may hear that from your residents, and that's a difficult misperception to convince the residents otherwise. But I think a lot of that stems from how the state legislature has maybe unfortunately labeled the long-term tax exemption law. It's not really a long-term tax exemption. It's a long-term reallocation of tax revenue. And what we're proposing tonight is for the tax revenue from this project, yes, the unit purchasers will receive a short-term benefit, their taxes, their pilot payments will be slightly lower than conventional tax payments would otherwise be. But the bottom line from the city's perspective is that the city will receive 95% of every pilot dollar that comes in. So whereas under a conventional tax scenario, the city would get 40% approximately, in Monmouth County gets a higher percentage, here, from the annual service charge payments, 95% goes to the city. What that means in real dollars, based on our analysis, $700,000 in revenue from this project alone in year one of the pilot, $300,000 in additional revenue compared to conventional taxes in year one of the pilot, and approximately $3 million overall over the term of the pilot. Now, we would encourage the city to adopt a 30-year pilot for every project in the redevelopment area, because we think these results can be extrapolated across the redevelopment area and across a 30-year period that the law allows. But, that having been said, in the spirit of fairness, we just want what our neighbor has already been given. To make the two projects on equal footing, that's really what we're asking for. And again, no downside to the city. This project's a private community, no municipal services. With the pilot revenue that comes into the city, the developer will not be able to take advantage of the Municipal Services Act whereby it would otherwise be reimbursed for some municipal services. And there's no school kids. That's the biggest thing. The biggest thing we see with a pilot is residents saying, "Well, wait a second. You're cutting out the school district." Well, here, with the type of project that we're proposing, few, if any, school kids are going to be, are going to be residents of this project. We've submitted a study that says two to three, and that's a worst-case scenario. Realistically, we think the number will be much less. And that having been said, even if there were school kids, the city is getting an additional $300,000 in revenue per year based on our projections. If you felt you needed to cover the cost of those kids with the school district, you absolutely could. You'd have the ability to do so. You can allocate that money however you want. You could even use that money to reduce the overall tax rates. $300,000 in additional revenue, that doesn't mean you need to have $300,000 in additional expenses. It could mean that the municipal budget gets reduced by $300,000, making the beneficiary the residents of the city as a whole. So, look, finally, and I know we have limited time, my clients want to present, they want to make a personal appeal to you. We would urge the city not to foreclose the use of pilots entirely. They're a very valuable tool, they're only available in redevelopment areas, and they're only available before the project actually gets started. Once the project gets started, that ability to use a pilot is gone. The law does not allow a pilot to be put in retroactively. So, for instance, if FEM got started and the city said, "Hold on a second, this pilot's working out great for us." You're going to miss out on the ability to use that pilot for other projects in the redevelopment area if they already get started and you don't allow them. What we would encourage the city to do, instead of foreclosing the use of pilots entirely in different areas of town, different areas of the redevelopment area, is to adopt the approach that you've already started to do, which has been very successful in areas like Jersey City. Jersey City has done this for years very successfully. You grant pilots of a 30-year term in the areas that you deem most desirous of redevelopment, a 20-year term in the other areas, a 10-year term in other areas. You've already started to do this with the FEM pilot. So, east of Long, east of Ocean Avenue, you get a 10-year pilot, and you make that the standard for everybody. In different areas, you might get a 20-year pilot. You might adjust the rates accordingly. But, what we're here to tell you is that this is a valuable financial tool. You can force developers to make this so that it is a benefit for the city and not just for the project. And we do this all the time. And we always come in with, my firm does this all the time, we do it all over the state, and we always come in with a proposal to say, "City, this is a benefit for not only the project, but for you too. You have to take advantage of this." So, again, we ask that the city please not miss out on this opportunity. Out of a sense of fairness, to put this development on equal footing with the project right next door, please consider acting favorably on our application. Before I take up too much more time, Mr. Fusco wants to make a personal appeal.
Okay. In 2010, Christine and I purchased 256 Ocean Avenue. When we made this purchase, the condition of the house was nothing short of a flop house. And we turned it into something we love. I've just bought some, brought some pictures here of what it was like when we bought it and what it's like now. And I'll, I'll leave them in the middle, since we don't have time, I'll, I'll leave them in if anybody wants to see them at the end. During the course of the construction of our home in Long, in Long Branch, we fell in love with Long Branch. We wanted to extend our vision for the houses that we, the house that we built to the part of the shore that was just south of us. And we started to assemble three parcels beginning in 2011. And just look at the first picture, and that's it. Just look at the pictures behind it, because that describes it. So, over the past five and a half years, we have worked with the city to create a plan that we love and will, which will be a beautiful addition to the Long Branch beachfront, and will be an asset to the tax base of the city going forward. The plan that we have developed has been an excellent example of a public-private partnership and collaboration. With the signing of the Redevelopers Agreement, we have become partners, the city and us have become partners. Now, we need you as our partner to give us the tool that we need to complete our collective vision. The pilot is a win for all involved. It is a win for the city because in the form of $3 million of additional tax revenue over what you would get normally to the general fund over the next 10 years. It is a win for our buyers because it brings Long Branch on an equal footing with neighboring towns and encourages their investment in Long Branch. It is clearly a win for us because we can bring, for Christine and I, for Christine and me, because we can bring our vision to life on an even playing field with our most direct competitor, which is located only a few hundred feet south of us. Without the abatement, we don't know if we will be able to compete successfully. The ability to provide a pilot is an asset to the city. It is an asset, not a negative. And cities all around the state look to be declared a redevelopment zone and get a pilot. You guys have it as an asset. The city would do well to embrace this asset. Pilot programs have been afforded to them by the state. There is $3 million available to your taxpayers. It would not be why, if, why would it be wise to refuse this $3 million? Thank you for taking the time to reconsider our application, and we look forward to getting started. And my wife wants to say just a word.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Six years ago, you've heard this, Jim and I started implementing what I call his vision. It started out at first to be sort of a comfortable investment for us, and it ended up to be triple of what we started out, assumed that it could be. And that was in order to conform with all the rigor and regulations of this redevelopment requirement. We didn't opt to build an I-shaped building like everybody else. We didn't choose to cram 60 units in our parcel. We chose to make something very unique and very beautiful. And we worked hands-on for all this time to make this and detail this to be something that is very unique and special. It's just Jim and me taking on what has become an institutionalized, institutional-sized project. We're not a big developing company. Jim owned one in the past, but it's, we have a small company now that he has taken all of his talent and experience and has put it into doing something, making a contribution to the area. So, we have a lot of risks, and I knew that going in. We have financial risks, we have construction risks, we have selling and marketing risks, which have probably more than tripled since I signed on to this three years ago, six years ago. But now, not to have a pilot increases that risk exponentially, especially because of our direct competition as well as the boom in the area that people are building and so on. And I just don't understand why. Thank you.
Very brief, I just want to sum up. If, I tried to cram an hour and a half's worth of information in about six and a half minutes. So, if, if the council has any questions, we don't necessarily, obviously, we, we ask for approval. Before you take any action that would result in denial, this is an opportunity for us to provide you whatever information you might need. If you have additional questions, please let us know. If you want us to come back and do one of these again, we'd be happy to do it, a public meeting, whatever it takes. I know these two will continue to fight for this. They very much believe in the project, but they very much need this. One thing I don't know if I mentioned that's different from, our application's different from the FEM application, we've included the ability of the city to terminate the pilot after eight years. So, if for whatever reason the city is not happy with the results after eight years, the pilots terminated, the units revert back to conventional taxation, again, we don't think that's going to be the case. We think this is going to be a windfall for the city. We think it's going to be good for the project, it's going to be a successful redevelopment, and we hope they approve the application. But that would conclude our presentation.
Thank you. You made a very clear and compelling argument.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda.
Jim, are these, are these for us to keep?
You can, sure. I was going to take the time to show them to you and say, "This is this and this is that."
No, we got it.
Okay.
We got it. I have a little history.
Thank you.
We're going to have a presentation on the concession stands for the beaches.
Good evening, everybody. Basically, what we were trying to do is establish the new terms and conditions for the concession stands. We wanted to forward you what, what they were with some of the changes that we thought were necessary. I really don't have a big presentation. The biggest thing is, is there any questions that you guys have on the terms and conditions, whether it be comments, changes that you want myself or Kevin to include in the new bid when we go to put it out?
The equipment now that's inside is ours?
Well, we don't know that just yet. We're in discussions.
I'm meeting with the attorney tomorrow to hopefully finalize that. We're pretty confident that's going to be the case. The previous vendor would like for that to happen. They've agreed to that?
We're, we're taking the position that, and she wanted this, she wanted to leave us the equipment in lieu of us trying to proceed after them for the balance of the two-year contract. So, we're hoping that it all works out, and we'll have the equipment, and we can lease it out fully equipped, which would really make it advantageous.
A lot more friendly.
So, the other thing that we did, we discussed it, and we came up with the thought of, instead of, instead of leasing all three under one contract, we split them. The West End stand is one, and then the Cottage in the bath as the second one. Because what we heard from last year when we did it was people said, "You know, it's a big undertaking for one person to take all three." And it turned out that way, because, listen, the vendor we chose wasn't open regular hours, and there were issues. So, we're hoping this will drive more competition and some more local folks to bid on it and get us some better tenants. And we normally, you know we would make the presentation, put it on the following meeting, but we're trying to get this out because it's a, you know, we're running out of time. It's, it's March. So, we're trying to get this moving along to get them, get an offer here and there for like April 15th.
Are there any other major changes from the old bid to this bid? Or is that pretty much it?
The other change was that we lowered the, you know, the minimum bid. We had 21 people that reached out for the specs last time. Only had two, two vendors bid, and the lowest bid was 27,000, and the highest was 33. So, this time, if you look at the two properties, it's going to be 21,000. As far as the city, the minimum revenue we would get in. So, you have the chance of a person coming in to get West in now at 10,005, and the other two units are 10,005. So, to me, that's, that's one of the bigger changes, along with the equipment probably would, is another, is going to be another great thing for whoever, you know, wins the bid.
We're hoping the equipment issue works out. We're also hoping that we're going to get more competition bids and more local folks to try to pick them on. I mean, it's a big commitment, obviously, three concessions stands, so having one or two would be...
Now, the middle one does not have kitchen, it's all dry goods.
Correct.
Refrigeration for beverages?
Yes, yes, it does.
Prepackaged sandwiches, if someone wanted to do something like that.
Make them at one.
Your dry goods.
Dave, the minimum bid last year was 21, it was the same, 21,000 for all three? The minimum bid?
Yes, for all three, I think it was, yes.
So, it's, so it's basically the same?
Yes, but you're, yeah.
It says that it's broken up.
Yeah, it's broken up.
And Kevin, what did they, so they, what did they have to put up? The previous one, in other words, what, what are they, what was bad, or what's the...
I don't think, I don't think they owe anything back. They paid their fee.
No, they, we have, we have their deposit, they had to put down a security deposit, and they paid, they were, they paid the rest for the whole year. We got 33,100 for the first year.
Right.
So, those three units went for 33,100. So, the term of the contract was 90...
Right, but what are you negotiating now then?
The equipment.
Right.
What's there? Because she has a three-year contract.
She broke the contract.
I see.
So, she broke the contract. I mean, listen, we're not going to get anything from her. So, we're hoping that it works out, she'll sign over the equipment to us, we'll be able to lease it, you know, the way it is, we won't, you know, have any implied warranty on the equipment, but it would certainly get a lot more interest if those things are equipped.
And the equipment, the terms of the equipment are in there also. It says that we're not going to be responsible. Equipment breaks, you have to repair it, it's not to be as-is, that's in there.
Was it all new a year ago?
Yes, everything in there was brand-new.
I have a question about the lease. I know last year, Jim, we had talked about putting in a clause, I believe you did, so that we could, at the end of the first year, decide whether or not we were happy, you know, with their performance and all, and is that, is that still in there?
Yes, I don't see why it wouldn't be, and it's, it's number four on the, on the first page.
So...
We back.
We have 60 days. Every year, if we wanted, we decide to...
What are the reasons that we could, you know...
Not follow.
Not follow, you know?
Not renew?
Yeah, not renew.
Well, if they break, once these terms are set, the terms can't be changed once, once you guys approve the term. So, for any reason, they decide, they break any of the terms, whether it be not opening on time, not filing the menu, not keeping the unit clean, putting signs up, you know, it states clearly that an administrator can take action and then come to you guys and say, "Listen, we want, we don't want to renew them for these reasons." And we, all we have to do is give them 60 days' notice.
So, Dave, is the, is the equipment issue going to be resolved before you go out to bid then?
Yes, well, I can't go out to bid if you approve it. I'm, I'm meeting tomorrow with...
That was often the way to show.
Yeah, I'm meeting with the attorney tomorrow.
Okay, so are we good with that?
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the director of workup. And we're going to review Ocean Avenue parking meters, covered boards, and Great Lawn parking.
Am I going to defer to you, because you seemed like you wanted to do it when we were at dinner?
You mean I came prepared, don't you?
Yes, you came prepared. If you want to do it, you can do it, otherwise I can, I can talk.
We want to add to the metered parking for Ocean Avenue between Bath and Pavilion Avenue. There is 76 parking spaces there that we want to add to our schedule, install meters along the boardwalk, and have the metered parking there.
I think we spoke about this to you originally back in January when we talked about...
Between North Bath and South Bath?
No, between North Bath and Pavilion.
Pavilion.
I'm sorry. South Bath, Pavilion.
So, last year we had block walk South Bath and North Bath, right?
We opened that up, that's been since opened.
And it's going to stay open, you're saying?
It's going to remain open, yes.
One-way traffic or two-way?
It's, Ocean Avenue is one-way northbound, but South Bath is two-way traffic. It's parking, and that's metered on both sides of the street.
And that's going to be metered on both sides between...
It is, it currently is.
South Bath is, correct.
Okay. Can you tell that all this parallel parking will, will be out of it?
Correct, on Ocean Avenue, yep, there's 76 spaces.
76, surprising.
Yeah.
Okay.
How are we going to address, because we talked about, has the issue of bike lanes or bike paths, or sharing bike lanes and whatnot?
Well, we are, as, as you know, we've discussed, we're looking into ways to do some sort of a municipal program, and we're working on it, it's a work in progress. But regardless, it wouldn't make a difference on Ocean Avenue because we've been parking there, so that wouldn't stop it.
Yeah.
I don't have an answer for you tonight, it's, you know, we've applied for some grants, we have measures, done some designs on Ocean Boulevard, things we're looking at to bring back to you, but it's, it's in, it's in process. The, the other issue with the parking is the Great Lawn lots, the two lots on the north and south lots. We want to increase them to match the same fee schedule as Pier Village.
Which is what?
Which is, which amounts to $1 an hour more on the weekends.
What's the ocean cost? See, this year, you're, you're, you're widening your way to those lots for a little bit.
What is the cost?
Currently, currently, it's a dollar an hour Monday through Thursday, and $3 an hour Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in Pier Village.
$1 an hour or $2 an hour?
It's two.
It was two.
Two in Pier Village, two in three.
The schedule hasn't been here $1.
In Pier Village?
Yeah, it says.
Should be two.
And during the week, Monday to Thursday.
It's two. I'm reading off the schedule. I thought it was two.
I think it's two, and I'm wondering, are we going towards $2 an hour during the week in, in...
I can tell you what the schedule says, it's a dollar an hour Monday to Thursday, $3 an hour Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
And when we changed it to $2, why?
We did. I must be an old...
It's not, yes, for two bucks.
Yeah, it's $2 an hour.
One dollar and $2, and now you want to go to three. What's that? It was $2, you know, on the weekends in Pier Village. Is it $1 during the week? Yeah. One, two, and then... One and two, we want, we want... I believe, yes. And we made it one and three. That was the change.
On two and three.
This is David, he's proposing that.
I thought it was two and three.
I thought it was two and three.
We're proposing the change for the Great Lawn South and North lots to match the Pier Village, which is a dollar an hour Monday to Thursday and $3 an hour on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. That's what I've got here, so if you change it's...
I don't like it. I, I, I don't think it's too high.
That's what we've had.
It's currently what we're charging.
I mean, not in Pier Village, that's fine, but I mean, over by, by the beachfront.
Same distance to the beach, regardless of the people who come in, they park, they're 100 yards from the beach, and they fill up first thing in the morning.
Babies and kids, yeah.
But you won't turn them over by making it cheaper. You make it worse.
About $1 during the week, and just raise it on weekends.
That's what we asked for. We're just talking about weekends.
Well, if it's going to match Pier Village, I think it's $2 and $3, but...
I think it is, but...
Well, I think it is two.
If you want to make it $1 and $3, I would accept that. Wonder about anybody else?
No, I'd like the two and three.
But it's not two, it's one.
It's one, right? I, I've never picked a partner on...
I just, I don't want, I throw my money in.
I'm pretty sure we went to two and three last year, maybe that just didn't make the schedule.
The schedule they get changed, so...
It's on the website.
It should have come off the, I printed it off the website.
Off the website?
It's a schedule A.
So, it's one and two, and we want to go one and three, correct?
Maybe we want to go two and three, don't we?
It says two and three.
Oh, not on the main.
I'm okay with one and three.
Two and three on the site. I just don't know if we, I don't know if we can do one and three in one area and two and three in another area without messing up the meters.
Well, we're, we're telling you it's two and three, we're going to change the schedule.
Yeah. Says two and three on the website.
But that's what our request is to do, and our suggestion.
I would like it to be one and three.
So, three on weekends, you go with.
I'm okay with three on weekends.
I don't... Pier Village just has two hours on here. Pricing, Pier Village, $2 an hour Monday through Thursday, and $3 an hour Friday, Sunday, and holidays. Outside of Pier Village is one hour Monday through Thursday and two hour Friday, Sunday, and holidays.
Correct.
That's what's on the website. So, it is two and three. So it is two and three.
It is two and three.
Two and three in Pier Village.
Yes.
And what we were suggesting is two and three in the Great Lawn.
And the rest of the city is... In other words, it's only... Yep, Pier Village is the only...
Pier Village is the only...
Correct.
It wasn't a reason that we made it higher in Pier Village specifically to help the business owners.
Help their people return to the more...
Beach.
Correct.
So by moving it to the Great Lawn, that's... I mean, I realize what you're saying, it's closer to the beach, but on the other hand, it's now moving away from Pier Village.
Proximity to the ocean. I mean, you're talking real... It's actually probably... It's definitely as close as Pier Village, and those lots fill up first thing in the morning.
And that's only between nine and five outside Pier Village. Pier Village is 10 to 15.
We'll leave the hours alone?
Right.
Yes.
So what is your decision? You want to do it?
I go for two and three. I want... I think it's... I think the point made is very valid. You're right, David, on the beach front.
I'd prefer to leave it alone, only because I fall believe that the goal was to satisfy business owners in Pier Village. That's why I'm raising this. I think if you kind of move it outside of Pier Village, maybe you'd question the other side as well, so...
Well, I should suggest a one and three.
Am I saying the same thing?
No.
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 What do you mean, one and three?
She's making it $3. Joy and Mary Jan are saying, "Raise it on the weekends." Kate's saying, "Make it consistent with Pier Village." Mike, we haven't... Mike says he just owes us money and he doesn't pay us anything.
Just probably I don't get a ticket.
That would never happen.
It's embarrassing, paying. And then we'll pay the ticket.
And then hours are till 5:00 o'clock.
Yeah, and that would be... That would also include the... There's spaces on Madison Avenue at the end of the Great Lawn that would also be the same. It would be one and three.
I don't know if we can do that, so we have to check into that.
Okay.
I don't know if we have to...
From a programming issue?
Create another zone or something. So let me check into that and see if we can do that before...
I think this whole parking meter thing is an evolving situation. Here, it's going to change. There's going to be new demands. What we said on one year, it's going to be changed the following year, depending upon how things are evolving and the demand.
Demand is huge.
And I, you know, yes, exactly. And those parking spots are very prime. First of all, they are also very close to Pier Village. People park there and can be in Pier Village in a matter of minutes, so I have no problem going the two and three. Does that help you out?
You know, revenue... You know, it's revenue.
It's revenue. And to be honest with you, we're, you know, right now, we're between May and October, correct?
Yes.
May and October. You go to other places.
You're paying year-round.
You're paying year-round. I think Red Bank is Sunday free parking, but they are all year-round. Asbury Park is all year-round. We're looking at the... Those times there.
Yeah, we're only doing nine to five, too.
It's much cheaper at Asbury Park, though.
In the summer?
It's like $0.50.
No.
No honey. No man.
On... I just pay $0.50.
Did you get tickets?
I just take $0.50 an hour.
Well, not the summer.
On May... No, not in the summer. But I think in the summer, it's like $1 an hour.
But, you know, parking, you know, as we know, the topic with parking is expensive.
They have private lots. People with their private lots have meters, and they get $10 and $20 for the evening.
The rest of the city, other than Pier Village right now, is one and two.
Correct.
And that includes the Great Lawn.
Has a map.
Pier Village is two and three.
Correct.
So now we're going to have one and... One and two, two and three, and one and three?
If we can do that, if we can... If that's what...
If the machines will be programmed, yes.
I think it's going to be confusing to guess.
Everybody's saying it's two and three.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it just... I think it just makes it easier. Keeps it more consistent.
Okay.
And trust me, it's built patterns.
Very good.
Thank you.
Two more items. We want to add hoverboards as a prohibition on the boardwalk of the promenade. Okay? That's a pretty simple change.
What about skateboards? Skateboards are ready?
Currently prohibited.
Okay, because I see kids a lot, especially this time of year.
We have a sign program that we've put into place. We hope to have new signs up on the promenade and the boardwalk in the next three or four weeks. We currently have it on the sign boards.
Hoverboard, skateboard, bicycles, dogs.
Dogs. Yeah, a little bit more.
But we just want to add this before we got the signs up so we can actually put hoverboards on the signs.
Do you want to put the word dogs on the sign?
Animals, it says. The ordinance is animals.
It reads it a certain way that I've seen people read it and not understand what it means, believe it or not. I forget what it says.
I have to go down, but that's hard.
It says, I forget how it reads.
Domestic animals.
Domestic animals.
Okay, we will... We want to insert the word dog.
Do you want these animals or just use animals? What if someone walks a cat?
We don't laugh, we've had it.
It does add...
We had animals, it was good.
I believe... Yeah, animals is good. It kind of covers everything.
He won't get ferrets.
How about, you know, those strollers? The strollers that you put their animals in, are they allowed on?
Because I actually witnessed.
I guess. I mean, you could walk your kids in a stroller, right?
We can get other signs that...
I saw somebody with a stroller, and when I looked in the stroller, it was a dog.
On our boardwalk.
It's the problem with the leashes and everything, more than everything.
And me, I look at it, I'm like, "Oh, a little orange." A little orange glaze we're going to ice with, and I fit my tongue. It was his pet.
A mango sorcerer.
The last thing we have is we're looking to do an ordinance change to permit the city to use the senior center parking lot in charge for parking on weekends. No meters. No meters with an attendant when necessary.
That's what I... That's what I was going to add.
We're going to use special places to...
I think so. Then the meters won't scare them.
We know scaring. And to be honest with you, I spoke with Nick Manoya today, and we're going to look to enter to an agreement with him to lease some of the property across from the current lot on Second Avenue. And we're talking to Stan that operationally, that would be easier. So we may not even use the lot, but we like to have the ordinance in place.
Which would probably make us happy because we really don't want to deal with it.
So just to confirm, the parking spaces are not going to be numbered and there's no meters? It's just going to, as an added basis, or whatever?
Correct.
Fourth of July?
Yeah, I think he would only use it on really big days or special days or something like that.
Just weekends and holidays, right?
Yeah, and I don't even know if we want to use it every weekend. It's going to be... I mean, if we're going to have to put a guy there, and we're going to have to put somebody there that's a Class II, you know, because we don't have any... Because they're going to be standing there with a handful of money now instead of putting it in the meter like the other guys do. So we'd really rather stay away from that if we possibly can, except on bigger days and things that...
Is that part where you ask more cops?
Are we also... Any more questions?
You're right, that's Thursday.
Are we still going to offer beach badges through the parking meters? We had talked about...
As far as I know, we've talked about it.
We are. We met earlier...
Last week, correct?
Last week. Met last week, and we placed the order for the new machines, and we also met with Stan and went over locations. We're going to offer to sell the beach passes at two locations at... By the gazebo in Pier Village and by the Laird Street Comfort Station. There are two locations we're going to try this summer.
Well, you're not going to be able to buy a badge out of any machine, I think, not just the two locations. We're going to put meters on the boardwalk specifically for badges, but everything will take parking, and everything will be able to buy badges.
I don't know if we're going to program that way or not, because I think they have attendants you want to work with.
No, no, no. They're going to go in, they're going to have their receipt, and then they're going to go down and collect the badge from the attendant.
How many new meters do we have to get up here? We have to...
We haven't been replaced.
We're replacing 11 this year, and we have eight new spots.
Yeah, we haven't replaced any yet, and they're...
This is the third... Regarding the third or fourth year?
Yeah, but they're five years old. Because we have been prior to Sandy. Been prior to Sandy, so they're at the point where we really need to start replacing at least some every year, which is why we started this year.
And they were undersized to begin with, but they've been a headache since the beginning of the year.
Okay, we have another question here.
Yeah. We were talking about Ocean Avenue. What are we going to do from Brighton Avenue over to, I forget the name of the street?
West End.
Is that going to be open?
We're working on it, but that's not part of the ordinance. Yeah, it's this... There were not parking cars there.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah. We're working on it. We haven't come up with a definitive plan yet, but we are working on it.
So there's no decision on that at this point?
No decision yet.
Just for clarification, in other words, the things you're asking us to do tonight, there's a parking meters, a hoverboard, and so forth. That's a council decision.
Well, the ordinance changes.
That has to be done by ordinance by council.
We don't want to bother drifting ordinance if you don't want to do it, so...
But in terms of opening Ocean Avenue or whatever you do, that is not a council decision. Is that correct?
That's what I understand.
So what is the distinction? In other words, why would one be by ordinance and the other not?
Because we have to pass an ordinance to charge money.
I'm sorry?
We have to pass the ordinance to be able to charge money.
Okay, so you have to pass an ordinance to charge money. You don't have to pass an ordinance...
We don't have to pass an ordinance to do roads and that kind of stuff, yeah. Parking, that kind of stuff is all ordinance stuff. We have to have that so we can write the summonses, we can do the money and all that stuff, everything.
Will that be discussed with us at some point prior to doing it?
I would assume so. We'll have to see where we come with that.
Okay, good. Thank you. We have a... Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a review of the regular meeting agenda. Does anyone have any questions about the regular meeting agenda? Okay, I need a motion to close.
So moved, second.
All in favor? Or any opposed? Okay, I need a motion to adopt a resolution to go into executive session for the following items. Blue collar, white collar, out of state lawyers, pier, Lux, Ocean Gate, Long Ranch Partners, Lepore, and Kelly.
Second.
We have everything... Oh, one more thing, a redevelopment update by...
We don't have... We have a call, and we're not having a call.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Roll call? Roll call?
Mrs. Billy?